We are not.
Right, I mean, we're, nobody in this room is making an exorbitant amount of money.
That happens in most.
And we don't need to be putting up with that. Priscilla or anybody else.
But that's the norm, we work for the public. We all work for the public.
We all do, all of us.
We don't work in a private field.
Everybody knows what everybody makes in this room. There's no secrets. And that's where the problem lies. I mean, James, he got a bunch of people working for you, Tracy. Nobody knows what anybody makes. They think they know, but if they see their paycheck. But here, everybody sees everybody's paycheck.
So just approve that amount for all the clerks and you'll be fine?
And I can tell you way out west, those commissioners make five dollars a meeting. And I had a clerk tell me that some, most of them aren't even worth five dollars a meeting.
We got employees that ain't worth five dollars.
I did not say that. That was not me.
That's Jim Davis County, if anybody wants to know. But check it out, they make five dollars a meeting.
I don't think any one of us thinks that that person, an individual, does not deserve it. We believe that she does. We believe she is worth it. And each one in the other departments are just as worth it. That's what we are saying.
You understand, we're going one by one by one here.
But you have struck all of them out. Each one of them, I don't.
No, we've just been told a three percent across the board. That's what was approved.
Okay, just for information purposes, at the proposed three percent across the board, your clerical positions will range from ten dollars an hour to twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour.
From ten to what?
Twelve thirty-seven.
What are we talking about for the administrative assistant?
Twelve thirty-seven, she's a top clerk.
She makes what now?
She makes ten dollars.
Ten dollars and thirty-four cents would be her hourly rate with the three percent. Including the three percent.
What is, what are y'all doing? I'm here, could you ever ask?
Jeffrey's saying something, I don't know if he's waving at me right there.
We were asking.
Why don't we take, Tracy? He's got her working there. She's working for me, actually. This was kind of bombarded, why don't y'all take and hire, since you don't want to give raises, hire a part-time clerk to help take care of it.
Because we're already here.
She's pulled off her, the job she's doing with us, she's pulled off doing that stuff. You almost need a full-time clerk in there to do that if you don't do it. Do that if y'all don't want to do it the other way.
Do y'all have a place to put a full-time clerk?
Yeah, we put her in Tracy's office, we can put her on the desk.
We have to get her bonded.
That's good, not a computer. That's good.
Yeah, you talking.
Put another office.
See, I feel, honestly, I feel that you didn't get the raise and now you want a clerk. That's the way I feel, you know what I mean? A clerk should have popped up from the beginning.
Well, anybody starting with the county.
Barbara suggested it and they said no.
Any full-time employee gets ten right off the bat, starting pay?
Clerical, yes.
Okay, and Priscilla makes ten thirty-four with the three percent raise?
Correct.
So she's on, somebody can start today and make ten dollars and then she's making ten thirty-four with a three percent raise, that is not fair.
That's the same for mine too.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I'm just talking about this one. I know there's nothing fair about working for the county.
Carol said that her highest clerk's gonna make thirty-four cents more. Is that what you said?
My highest-paid clerk will get a thirty-four cent an hour raise.
Exactly, at the three percent.
At the three percent.
I'm sure she busts her butt, you know what I mean?
Yes, she takes care of everything if I'm not there. We get angry people too. We get defendants coming in, they're mad that they have to pay a fine because they just left county court. Thank you. You know, so we get a lot of angry people in there. We get people that are scary people. We don't know if they're gonna come in there and shoot us up because they're having to pay us a thousand dollars and be on probation for six months. We get that too.
Well.
And I don't think any of you have ever come in there and asked for something and not gotten it from us.
I was gonna say.
Every time, right away.
Even if we are busy.
Well, you know, Bob Henderson stood up and said, in 2008, our tax base was 500 million. Now it's 3.5 billion. Now, our salaries surely have not kept up with our tax base. And I've had constituents tell me that. And I don't know if anybody in this room would ever be happy. I mean, we pay you, you know.
It's just about equality.
We have to do something. Because for years, everybody was so underpaid. And now we give these little raises and everyone has, it's like the end of the world.
Mr. Calhoun, I'm starting at a ten eighty-seven. I'm a six-year-plus employee. Almost seven, a ten eighty-seven. It isn't fair. But you're also asking me to train personnel and supervise personnel, just like what you're expecting other people to do. So I'm not trying to tell you to make it fair now. What I'm saying is, look at what you're doing. You're looking at, in a small box of something. You're not taking everything into consideration.
If anybody has any suggestions how we can make this fair, totally equal, please let me know. Luana, I mean, how we make this fair?
We go through this every year. We sit here, I've said it 12 years.
But, but James.
Same, same story. Ultimately, it's gonna be.
With the exception of the last three years.
And we're gonna piss people off, we're gonna make people happy.
But can I say, can I say yesterday too, Carl, in return for that, we were sitting, Pete was with me yesterday, we sat there with five other county judges that are all going through the same thing right now. Their concerns are the same concerns that all you people have. And their concerns are also the same concerns that we have. As they said, Joe, when this tax money comes in, you get the first eighty percent in five years. And these judges are scared to death of what's gonna happen, you know, seven years down the road, 10 years down the road. Is they don't want to set up another commissioner's court for failure because that tax base decreases. It's not gonna decrease to the bare poverty level that Clarence County's probably used to incurring. But is it going to decrease to the part where we're gonna have to be manageable? And there was a concern about that, did that not come up yesterday, Pete, was, you know, everybody's being damaged so hard right now, especially with the Eagle Ford, we're all getting killed, you know, about, and it's all happening to us at once. But what happens when this starts dwindling away? We have to make sure that we don't set up a commissioner's court for 10 years down the road up for failure. We had a commissioner in here the other day say, well, you know what? When I came into the office, we didn't have any money, so we didn't give any raises. But if they would have gave raises, it would have been something the prior commissioner's court would not have been able to keep up with. And so, why we're not, you know, we know that, we've got to realize that you need that help. But we also have to thank yours down the road of how we're gonna protect our roads, how we're gonna protect our employees, how we're gonna keep this stuff going. So we're all scared. This is so new, it came so fast, how fast does it go away? What happens? And I mean, there's a lot of new waters and waves that we're scared. And we don't know, a lot of times, it's working under the fear factor of how is this going to happen? Or how is this going to work? Or what can we do to get this fixed? And I mean, every county is going down that same path with us of trying to make sure, and I say scared, I mean, how do we maintain to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of Clarence County that will be in the best interest of Clarence County 20 years from now? Like the previous people have said. And so we do have to keep that going. But that's not gonna fix today's problem, and I understand that. And so I'm probably just rattling to you, like, shut up, Barbara.
Well, a lot of things too. Even though we're in the great surplus that we are right now or that we anticipate, I haven't put together revenue numbers yet. I'm sure they're gonna more than adequately cover what's proposed in the budget. And the odds are of this same court setting, when Eagle Ford is over, are slim and none.
Right.
But whomever sits there, whenever they sit there, they need to be making business decisions. Not just because, we've got the big pilots eat it all today. We need to plan for the future and be able to sustain in the future. I've heard a lot of businesses out there now that are having to consider pay increases for their employees because they want to keep them, they don't want them leaving to go to the oilfield. But they also, in that same discussion with their employees, have told them, but when the Eagle Ford leaves, pay's gonna go back down. And that's either gonna have to happen, we're either gonna have to, the county will either have to decrease pay or cut positions at the point in time when things fall.
That's exactly what Jim Allison said yesterday. He said he's seen it in West Texas County where they had these big increases and they either had to lay off a bunch of people or cut salaries.
And he said it ruined your county when they had to do the layoffs. He said it's been.
I was still sort of went through it.
But I think our.
I don't think anybody's seen the amount of pipelines go in.
The Permian Basin did. The Permian Basin did. Never was in struggle in the largest right now, it's trying to regroup and redo. But I think one of the things, one of the problems that we're having here today, I think one of the biggest problems that we're having here today, and no offense to Road and Bridge or anybody else, I think that these women have a very, very valid point. And I think that Tracy has a valid point. I think everybody's point's valid. But every time that we come in here, the Road and Bridge budget is what killed us. And Road and Bridge is not, I don't think, I don't think that we can sit there and say, because Priscilla's one of my favorite people in the whole wide world. I love to have her myself. I mean, if my Sylvia was gone, you know, I always, that's my big joke. But my, I mean, my Sylvia's the best, I know that. So, just like y'all know, y'all's is the best. But I don't think it's fair to these other clerks to sit here and do this. And I really don't think it's fair because it does, it does almost look like that it does become a perception in my mind, and I'm female, it becomes a perception in my mind that we're treating that male department, that that's a harder department. That's no harder than that department, like Carol's saying, that she has those land men in there. You know, and I'm not gonna pick on males either because my doc is male and female, but I work with both males and females and we all get treated the same way. We all, and I don't think that we can say that one person deserves that much more than the other. And if we're gonna do it for one clerk, it's gonna have to be clerical-wide or I just don't think that that is fair. We're coming to a point, if she needs help, I say, let's get her help. Let's get somebody that's bonded in there that's able to take money. No, but for one clerk to be set that high of a bar above everybody else is just not fair. And I know Priscilla works, I know she gets screamed at because Priscilla calls me, she's got my cellphone number. And I know that Lisa gets screamed at because she sits here next to me and gets screamed at while I'm getting screamed at. And I know that Carol calls me and busts at me for stuff that I've done over there. I mean, I know, I get in trouble from everybody.
So your clerical positions are ranging from ten dollars an hour to twelve thirty-seven.
Not another clerk.
Three percent.
If she quits, goes and gets more money, we'll have to hire two people anyway. Just hire another clerk.
Yeah, that's a real good way to look at it. You have a lady that's willing to do what she does every day, put a little bit of faith she does. And your attitude is, well, if she quits, she quits.
I would have shots too.
They say we can't give unless we give ten more of the same salary.
No, it's not that, Pete. You know, like Carl and everybody, Barbara just saying, the people, all of us are deserving. Well, let's take care of your divorce.
I'm forgiving her a raise, I'm forgiving her a raise, but it's not gonna happen. I'm all forgiving her twelve fifty an hour.
So why can't we make all the people happy? And what we gotta do, make a decision?
Twelve thirty-seven's the top salary of the other clerk. It's, I'm forgiving her that much.
Then, you know, if everybody wants to get started at twelve fifty, our God, give it to them. If it's got a change down the road, then we drop it back down. You know, let's make a decision, do something.
So, I'm sorry, so what are we gonna do with her? I mean, it brought up, he said he's forgiving her up to twelve thirty-seven. You know, what are we gonna do? We're gonna beat it to death right here.
You're gonna do it across the board and leave the starting rate at ten dollars an hour? You're going to leave everything else as proposed and just bump Priscilla? You're not gonna bump Priscilla? Decisions, people.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna beat it.
We're gonna bump her, we'll have to pump all the rest of them.
Do it, get it on.
Give them all.
Do what you gotta do.
Give them all. Make everybody happy.
Do what?
Just give them all, do the same percentage raise we go give her.
One thing in the defense of that suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
You remember the huge raises that Road and Bridge labor employees got last year? Priscilla did not. You remember the huge raises that deputies and regular dispatchers got last year that the clerical people did not? So if one of those other positions that got it last year come back in and complain, that's your defense on it.
Okay.
They got it last year.
That sounds great.
So what is the percentage increase that they're asking for? From her, from her, whatever she makes now to the twelve thirty-seven or twelve fifty, what's that percentage?
Twelve thirty-seven. You know, I think the court had, you know, everybody's well-being in mind when we raised the part-time to nine dollars and the full-time to ten dollars. But it created some peral problems at the same time. It was good for the people coming in, bad for the people that have already been here for many years. Like, she's making ten eighty-seven, that's just not fair. You've been here how many years? They just swamp.
But see, everything we do creates a problem. That's why we're gonna have to step outside this box. Either Luana and I are gonna have to sit down and figure out a step, salaries, you know, like, the state does this. They have what they call the four-step program. Anybody ever worked for the state, they'll tell you, you have a four-step program, whether you're a, you know, and you go in, you're number one at this, you're number two at this, you're number three at this, and you're number four at that. And then you have a max out. And after that max out, you only get, like, if you start, you're number one at eight dollars, you're number two is nine dollars, you're number three is ten dollars, you're number four is eleven dollars. And then after that, you get the percentage, you know what I'm saying? You don't get both, you can never double dip. The state will not allow that to happen. But then you get that percentage rate. Are y'all following me? Did I say that sensible? It's like a step program, and then after that step program maxes out.
I don't know if y'all were listening to the news this morning, but they're talking about the state-run prison system. And the predicament that they're in is that, you know, starting pay is like twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Everybody left the prison system and they're really, really on the brink of collapsing. And I think that's the last thing this county wants to see happen, is all these people leave.
But if we get everything too high, a lot of corporations have to bring, that's just unfair.
Judge you and everybody on this court knows that no matter what it is, I mean, you kind of keep up with the times. You pay, and you give raises, and if business goes away, you come to your driver, your truck drivers, and you say, hey, look, y'all gonna have to take a four dollar an hour cut in pay, or I'm gonna have to lay you off.
It's been done.
And it's been done. And why should the county be any different? I mean. Because what we're gonna do to our people is we're gonna keep them here at nine, ten dollars, okay? And we're gonna keep them for five years and the boom's over. And they never really, they never shared in any of the, you know what I'm saying? If you give them a nice raise and they have that raise for four, five years, and then at the end, you take a dollar or two away or three, they're gonna come out ahead with the raise for five years.
They're gonna try to take it away.
You know what I'm saying?
You can't, it's hard to take it away, man, because you take away, you're saying, one, two, three dollars. They got a car payment, they bought a house, they're paying X amount of dollars. You take three dollars away an hour from somebody, bad, they're gonna quit. Right, but I'm trying to say, I know, I've been running a business over 20 years. That's why I know, I don't know what happened.
Happens in the trucking business all the time.
They're gonna walk out. I mean, what I'm trying to say is, what the judge is trying to say, we have to gradually go.
Because government's different, they'll never, they will never take the cut in pay. They will never take it.
Well, the prison system.
That's the position.
Very few will stay, most will quit. No matter, no matter who it is.
That's what you're up against now.
But where?
Very few are gonna stay.
Well, we could say the same thing to the prison.
We have to have this budget done, I mean, we can't wait till the last two days.
I know what you mean.
We can't wait till the last two days and get it done.
That's why I said, we're not the best, every budget in your land, you know, we're unfavorable, Paul, here.
Oh, I finished my water.
He looked aggressive back there.
I was like, what is he doing?
Is it that about 23 percent?
Twenty-three point three, three percent.
Well, that would just be impossible.
That would be the increase, if you increase the Road and Bridge administrative assistant from the current rate of pay to the highest administrative assistant clerical position currently.
Well, we're gonna end up just like the state with the prisons, so I can tell you that. Now, they don't have any guards and.
But that's their choice, if they want to stay or not. It's nobody else's choice. Y'all decide what y'all want, if they want to stay and if they don't want to stay.
I was gonna kind of mention that, ma'am, because, I mean, we've been here so many years and everything, we've made unfavorable decisions a lot of times. Honestly, I really haven't seen anybody really walk away. Really, I mean, how many people have the, I'm asking about the argument.
Bobby Shorner.
No, no, but.
But that wasn't about money.
No, that wasn't about, that wasn't about pay. I'm talking about, when we finish and we start the new fiscal year and, you know, whatever we do, what we do up here, do y'all remember anybody that's really just walked away and been pissed off and walked away? Or most of them have understood or accepted the situation?
Well, in the past, a lot of them haven't had the job opportunities to walk away too.
Are they there now, Luana?
I don't know, I haven't looked.
You like to read in the paperwork, it says 25,000 to 80,000 dollars. And, I mean, in all honesty, that hype that we get about the Eagle Ford shell, remember when you're looking at those salaries? And they're doing these average salaries? The CEO of these companies make ridiculous, stupid money. We, I mean, and they're on the internet. The vice president of one of these companies, and I looked at that and I'm like, oh my God, made 540,000 dollars for four bonuses. So it doesn't always trickle down. Don't think that trickle-down effect is always alive. It's why people, a lot of people don't want to work for these huge companies is because they take it all and they put it in corporate.
Because the little man does all the work and the big people get the big dollars.
And one of the guys, I was visiting one of the presidents of one of the companies, and I asked him, I said, how are y'all meeting this need? You know, how is this happening? Oh, he says, well, easy. He says, the rest of Texas is in a recession, so we bring in our workers from point A to point B. That's why we've established our own camps and that's why we're doing stuff. He says, because we're not gonna meet the demands that you guys are all wanting us to meet here. He says, it's insane. He says, we will not pay the pay that people are wanting. And I was like, oh my God, I would have never thought to fly people back and forth. You know what I'm saying? They're like, oh no, it's cheaper.
But I mean, we do have a real problem when somebody can start on day one, working for the county, make 10 bonuses.
But that can't be fixed a day.
Was it fixed last year?
That's in the private sector.
Last week, last 12.
Yeah, it is in the private sector, it's everywhere. You saw it in GEO. I mean, I stole from GEO because I could pay more than GEO, true or not true? I stole all of GEO's employees and it's the same company. But the pay grades are different because it's the same company.
I'm sorry, just.
What you were talking about earlier, knowing people don't leave or not. I don't think anybody in any of the departments know who will leave, who don't. I know whatever, all across the county, everybody works. Everybody's hopeful to see what's gonna happen in October. Whether if it's five or one, none, you don't know, you're not gonna know until that happens. But I do know you got a lot of people that are hopeful, they are willing to get, and then that's across the county. That's not just in one department or another, that's everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
I mean, you know, y'all, you know, y'all put in for a raise. And I understand it's across the board, but all these, all these people do it. And I don't know how that works as far down the road, if they can move them back down or if, you know, people agree with that. But, in all honesty, the county's been behind for years and years and years.
And last year, Rick, we did try to do a big catch-up.
I'm not just talking about us, you know.
And I'm just gonna say something, I'm gonna point this out while we're here, because I get this hit with me every time we leave here. You look at every elected official in this room, nobody has any employees with them, and Jeff does. And we get chastised, or I do, and say, why are you paying Road and Bridge employees to come sit in commissioner's court meeting when only the elected or the appointed officials come? And that's just in fairness, that I'm gonna bring that up.
I'm on the date because my wife has certain.
But no, but they'll say, but I always get, I always get that back, Robbie. And I mean, I want every, if we're gonna talk about one thing and how high it is, and if Carol would bring her clerks in here to do the same thing, or Denise would, or By would, or Daisy would, or Brenda would, or, I can't remember your name, ma'am, it just escaped me.
Lupita.
All that's coming to me is Lupita. And, you know, Sharon, we would have the same battles from those same departments. And, you know, that's creating a circus within the county, but today, we need to move on with this budget. So what are we doing with this Road and Bridge position, or what are we doing so Luana can finish this?
Well, another thing too to consider, as I said earlier, the Road and Bridge and Sheriff's Department's got healthy raises last year. Specific Road and Bridge employees right now are proposed to give two dollars an hour more, right now. Not all of them, but some of them. That's a hefty raise, that's a nice raise. I think everybody would appreciate.
I think you're right.
Two dollars an hour.
Well, you know.
Two dollars an hour raise is way, you know, that's 80 dollars a week. And that's bigger than the raises that were given last year.
Well, I'm just telling you something, I would, now I never go to the grocery store. I spent 240 bucks and I didn't see any help taking those groceries to my car.
And on the way to work this morning, Exxon on the hill, moved the prices up to 3.89 a gallon.
Real.
Yeah, so.
As of yesterday, Mercantile had it at 3.89 also.
Yeah, so that's what we're faced with. Yes, we're in a boom, but everybody's really suffering because of, gas costs four dollars a gallon and groceries are higher than hell, and so is electricity, and so is water. And my water bill in 1980 was four dollars and fifty cents a month for the first 2,000 gallons, and I never went over. Now it's like 160, 180.
And I'll say this, Priscilla is very lucky to have so many people fighting for her. And I admire that about the men, and I'm glad that they're doing that. But we're doing the same thing for our clerks too, because we value them as much as they value Priscilla. And she is very lucky.
And she is, and that's to all departments because she assists us if we need it. We work together and we do appreciate each other. This is not against individuals.
Luana, when we bumped the starting pay from part-time up to nine dollars and full-time to 10 dollars, what were they prior to that? Because now, we bumped those nine, 10, now we need to bump these other ones up that appropriate amount. We need to do something to make it a little more fair than it is.
But again, that's.
I'm not saying, well, ever gonna make this thing fair?
That's a whole planning thing that has to happen, department by department, to get on a pay scale of something, but it's not gonna happen today.
We're in a crunch, I mean, we have a timeline, the state says we have to.
So, last year.
It's Friday.
But last year, the same thing was said and nothing was done.
The salary survey should be sent, Daisy, and you know.
Well, you know, why don't we just bring a salary survey? That's what we should have done, like, the judge is right, that's, we go through this every freaking year. Every year we sit here and it's going to a salary survey. And if it knocks, if it knocks down, picks up, if it knocks our back, I don't care. You know, I care, don't get me wrong, about, I meant about me, right? On my part, not about the people, but we bring that in because we try to make, I'm sorry, Judge.
Well, I still think you need to do something equal this year. The equality level just is not there between last year and this year between positions. My personal opinion.
What did you say, Luana, I'm sorry?
I said, I think y'all need to do something equal. The equality was not there last year, it is not there this year.
I agree, I agree.
I don't see how you can, even not on tenure, but there are some people here, Priscilla, Mary Ann, anybody. Everybody works hard. How can you say one clerical person works harder than anyone?
What, last year, what was given to everyone? What was it?
2,400 dollars for clerical positions.
That's 2,400 dollars.
But then you had those other select positions that some of them got it over 8,000 dollars a year last year.
Which was the sheriffs or the road bridge.
Okay, those were.
And now we hammered up Road and Bridge again this year. Road and Bridge got the huge raises last year and they're getting them again this year.
Some of them this year, not all of them.
And I realize that Jeffrey's trying, but everybody's trying.
Or the three percent.
We have to do something, but, so what do y'all want to do?
Or as equal as you possibly can.
Two dollars more an hour for everybody.
Because what we don't realize is, in the private sector, if you've had this employee for two or five years or 10 years, we have money invested in that employee training and they know their job. And then to say, well, they quit, they quit, hell, we got money invested in them.
And that's true too, but, and on the flip side of that is, the people that are not in the, I'm gonna put, I guess, oilfield industry right now, and they're just in regular business, that don't have the tax base to be able to depend on, are not giving those raises either, like GBEC, like Ashland, they're not doing it either, you know? And what ends up happening is every year at budget time, Road and Bridge creates a crisis. And what ends up happening is every year at budget time, road and bridge creates a crisis, and that should not happen. And that is every year at budget time, at the last week, at the last minute, at the last dime, Rick witnessed, sit down there the other day and figured it all out, that stuff that should've been presented at budget time, just like all of these ladies' stuff was presented. But every year, it's the last minute that this, this, this incident hits and happens to us and creates chaos.
Well, you know, it's just, like, you know, I'm talking about the road and bridge. James, if we threw 30 million or 50 million dollars and we were just gonna fix every road in the county, we'd spend every bit of 30, 40, 50 million dollars.
We asked for it yesterday. We know that.
And nobody had a stomach for that. Nobody had a stomach for that.
But we got to go on. Luana, we've gotta get this budget ready, and we have to have something ready by Friday. She needs a number.
Well, do y'all really think, I mean, I understand equipment is needed to do work as our employees to get the job done, but you're willing to spend a million dollars in equipment, but yet you're not willing to spend 300,000, 500,000 for raises?
That, that we need that equipment. That equipment over there for jobs.
Well, I understand that, but you also need the employees to operate it.
Yes, we do.
You also need the employees to work in the offices, to collect the monies, to be able to pay for the equipment for the people to operate to fix the roads.
And I understand what you're saying, but last year, how much did you say we gave in raises? Did the paper, 500 something thousand? If we give another 300 something thousand, that's almost a million dollars in two years.
But look what our tax base has gone up.
That's look what our tax base has gone up, but when it goes down, what do we do?
You cut pay or you cut positions.
When it starts going down, you just, you just, you just work on attrition. You just don't replace as they leave.
We've always done that in the private sector, but I've never seen a government entity take a pay cut.
I don't see how anybody...
But on, with attrition, you see positions not created again, not refilled.
Yeah, you just...
When people retire.
They retire.
That happens a lot in the state.
When the thing goes away, there're gonna be people who wanna retire. We just won't refill the position.
That's right. That's what you do.
We might move, move a couple of them up.
And you might have to cut positions? Or cut pay rates for the position? If the person can't afford to take that pay cut, let them go out and see if there's something out there that pays them better for what they do.
But right now, I think...
I mean, I think...
Everything is good and...
There is some fairness to letting everyone be a benefactor from the Eagle Ford shell.
May I say something? And I hope everybody that's here, I don't get anybody mad. I really sincerely, I don't get anybody mad. I don't hold it against anybody. This is a job I'm doing. When I walk out of here, I'm still everybody's friend. I'm still cool with everybody, hey, you know, everybody. But I hope everyone remembers who was here and who wasn't. What I said, I hope y'all remember what I said last year. We gave these tremendous raises. Not everybody didn't get them, but we gave a lot of raises. We bumped up clerical. We did this. We've been, I mean, I'm sure we can go back. What did I tell you? We're gonna be sitting here next year, man. Everybody was happy and everything, and everybody's gonna be complaining next year, and it's not, everybody's gonna forget about it 'cause you get, you said, I'm not saying that nobody's worth it, uh, everybody's worth it and everything. Everybody is, but this is an unfavorable job up here. You know what I mean? If you, if you don't got the stomach for it, then, you know, you can't sit up here, you know? It sucks. You gotta have the stomach for it. But, you know, I keep running for it. I must've lied to you on the other thing. I was dumb. But the thing, the thing is, we, we could try to bump, we did it last year, man. We bumped this up, road and bridge. I know sheriff's department of clerical didn't get as much, and I apologize for that. We did what we thought was right last year, but I told you that we would be sitting right here again, and everybody would be complaining again. We're sitting here. It don't matter. We could get $10 million right now. We'd be sitting here again, and it would, still would've been enough. We need to, I, if we can't figure it out, man, and we're doing crazy stuff every year by sending all this amount of money out and stuff, equipment I know we need and everything, that's, of course. I have, you know, that's for sure. Computers, all this stuff, I know we need that. But maybe we really do need help. Maybe it was a salary, you know, a salary survey person come in here to help us out, because apparently, I'm gonna be honest, don't look like we know what we're doing. Because I told y'all, I told you, told y'all straight up, no offense to anybody, don't plead. When we walk out of here, I'm still the same guy. This is a job I'm gonna do. Told y'all, nobody will be happy next year, and here we are.
The only, the only thing different, I think, that, that we can do is in private, when we tell you we're gonna cut your pay, we do it. And if we here, if we told you we were gonna cut your pay, you're gonna come go, "Oh, wait a second. We've learned, we've adapted to that money," and people do adapt to the income they make. We live within our needs. It's what people do.
James?
Yes, sir.
In your business?
Yes, sir.
In your personal, is that nothing?
Yes, sir.
Do you do that work out of the kindness of your heart, or to make a living for your family?
Which work? Because I give a lot of, I give a lot of pay also.
No, 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 it's your personal job. You do it to make a living for your family, correct? Everybody in here, they're not doing it because they want to, they have to. We have to supply for our families.
Yes, sir.
And if y'all can't understand us trying to better ourselves to supply for our families, then none of us need to be here.
No, I understand, and I don't think you're wrong, Robbie. You know, I'm not saying nothing directly toward you, toward anybody.
I didn't, I didn't take that...
I'm not directing it toward you, but, and I understand that we are...
Everybody in here, those are what they do for their families.
I under, I understand that. Not before that, I got off at 1:30 in the morning. Next night, I got off at 12:30 in the morning. I work 17, 18 hours a day, nine or 10. So I know what you mean. I do for my family, sir. But what I'm saying is, right here, we sit here, I put in 100 hours a week on my own. I'm 42 years old. You're literally gonna face me. But what, what I'm trying to say is, what we have to do right here, man, is unfavorable for everyone. You know, last year, I know we did a lot for road and bridge and sheriffs, not so much for the clerical.
Last year was last year.
Right. But, but still, last year, I said that nobody would be happy this year. It didn't matter if it was male, female, no, I'm not bringing up it, male, female, positions, whatever. It didn't matter. It was gonna happen again. For the most part of it, you know, I can say that a lot of people came in and, you know, didn't really didn't ask for much, you know, they were okay, did just little minor things and stuff like that.
So unless you're what you're saying, instead of y'all making a decision, that's what we're gonna do? You wanna spend another $75,000, get somebody else come in here and make the decision for you?
Not make the decision for us. It's not really make the decision for us. It's just like, maybe try to help us out here, because, I mean, like you said a little while ago, it's, you know, and I told y'all the other day, I told Rick, you know, infrastructure has to be strong. You know, but I mean, the boss has to be there. They have to go ahead and, you know, and like the judge said, like what Rick was, was clearing everything up and everything, if that would've came out from the start, we probably wouldn't be sitting here arguing and everything. Not arguing, debating. We probably could've already had it taken over, you know? But I just, you know, we're stuck. We're here. We're stuck. We're sitting here, and I apologize, you know?
It's easier for us to say that, 'cause we make 3,000, 6,000 and up, and with the exception of maybe one here. Nobody out here makes 30 what we make. And, and I really, to tell you the truth, the last four years financially have been tough on me because I'm used to making more than what I make here. And a gallon of milk is, what, five bucks?
What are you talking?
I mean, inflation, dude. I mean, these people are not getting a living wage. And the county's tax base went from 500 million to 3.5 billion. Now, what kind of increase is that, Luana? And if you're saying, if anybody's sitting here saying, "We cannot afford to give these people a raise", I, I don't think that's a true statement.
I think, I think...
Now, if we can't give them a reason, raise now and this time, when will we ever be able to give them a raise?
I understand that, Carl.
If we can't do it now, when, when can we do it?
We also gotta, we also gotta understand that every, every meeting we have, all of a sudden, we get a bright idea. Luana doesn't have that much time. We had that many bright ideas, we should've came up with them for Luana at first.
But the bright idea was that, that evaluation was in last year's, and, and y'all agreed to have that done. It didn't take place.
Right.
So even if we do it now, it may not take place.
Exactly. That's, that's...
Can we go to have it done? Can we go to have it take place? Please, Luana, order the salary survey study. Order it today. I mean, because it's gonna help us for five or six years. It will, because it will, somebody will create a step plan. Most counties have ordered one. They've created step plans. They've done stuff, so...
You're gonna have to make a decision on what...
We gotta go on.
I, I think anybody that's been with the county for six months, a year, two years, ought to make at least $2 more than somebody who started from day one.
Well, I'll tell y'all, Atascosa County is proposing $300 a month across the board for all.
All clerks and workers?
All, everybody.
Well...
I mean, we did 200 last year. What'd they do last year? They did 3%, right? That's what they did. Judge Batista told me they did 3%.
Atascosa's in the Eagle Ford, aren't they, huh?
Yes.
And do they have an equivalent tax base?
I could not tell you.
You've got that iPhone. You can't, wouldn't take it home, too.
Doesn't matter, because this county does not follow the lead of any other counties. This county, this court needs to make a decision based on Corrins County.
I understand, yeah.
With $300...
Or you gave them 20%?
Cross the board.
A $10 an hour.
Are you talking 20% for everybody or for, or you're talking to the clerks? 'Cause the 20, if you start talking 20% for everybody, then you're talking about, you're talking for the clerk. Oh.
That's the ones we're working on right now. Not everybody. We already, we just give everybody.
I wanna do what's fair. I do. I want to do what's fair.
Is that the way you can do that?
But, you know, I'm gonna admit, man, you know, we're your leaders, and I'll be the first to admit, I don't know what is fair for one or for the other. And it doesn't matter what you do, what you give. Somebody's gonna be, somebody's gonna be pissed. So if you're trying to make everybody happy, you're not going to, man. Period. You're not. You're not.
No, but I mean, it's not fair. Sharon making $2.87.
No, no, no. I know there's, I...
It's not gonna be fixed.
I, I know there's a lot of things that are not...
What are you saying?
Y'all, I mean, I at least admit, I don't, I don't know what to do. At least I admit, you know, I don't. I don't know what good that man does, but I know what I could, could try to do, but, I mean...
You give 20% for the first couple. But you can't give that...
There's so many options. You don't know what to do. I mean, there are, there are two for getting...
Two people to get something.
I think that's right.
Right.
You got, that's the only right thing to do.
But see, that, when...
You can't give it to first covers.
No, but that's, that should be a department, like the department head should say, "Okay, our full-timers make $12 an hour. Any new ones coming in, we're gonna start them at whatever." It's in the budget for 12.
Their rest part is start at the top. Every time I put somebody in, they use that top salary, and that's the rest, too.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is attract new employees.
We're trying to keep the ones we have, so we don't need new ones.
I mean, 'cause if we bump every clerk up to $12, this is gonna happen, too.
I don't think you can give a dollar amount, though.
Well, yeah, 'cause if we did that, then the ones that are already making $12, you'd say, "Wait a second." I'm in for 15.
You need a percentage.
Well, what if it's one to five years with the county, you give them 20%? Five to 10 years or more, you give them 10%?
You get less for being here longer?
And that's just...
Because you're already at a higher rate of pay. We're trying to get equality.
It's just for clerical? Just for clerical?
Well, that's what I was talking about right now.
Ross, she said five?
I said, "One to five years, 20% raise, because those are your lower pays." Five-plus years, 10% raise, based on their current pay rate today.
I like that.
Not including the 3% or anything else. That would at least get them to, all clerical positions relatively close to each other, I would think.
I like that.
That's a start.
That's a, that's a good start.
Wait a minute, somebody else say that, 'cause everybody's gonna get mad at me if they just get the 10%.
Lock your doors. Lock your doors. Lock that back.
My doors have been locked lately. Trying to do this.
Okay, slide everything in the door with you. I know. All I know is I'm gonna be hungry here for a while.
Okay, that's for clerical. That's what y'all were saying. That's for clerical? That's what y'all were saying?
That was my comment.
Excuse me?
That was my comment.
How many clerical positions are there? About 27.
That includes Priscilla, 'cause she holds a position. That's still clerical?
Yes.
Back with that Friday, Luana, the day we have to do this? I'm so confused.
We have to file the proposed budget by 5 o'clock Friday, but changes can be made just as long as they, are you listening to me?
Yes, I am.
I'm listening, too.
As long as they are announced and made public before we begin the public hearing before the adoption of the budget.
Okay.
Silence.
Hey, I'm waiting. Everybody's waiting.
That's all clerical, part-time and full-time? Is that, I'm just thinking, just full-time?
That's full-time. You got one likes it, two likes it.
And part-time? We're not there yet.
So if I give some of them $2 an hour raise, $4,000 a year?
And this will somewhat level off, 'cause we gave the sheriff's department of road and bridge such a big increase last year.
I think trying to level it off is just a never-ending battle. I think you should just do a strike percentage.
I'm gonna work, 'cause you're gonna have some of them right there on the border that are gonna get...
I think you should just strike percentage and be done with it.
Right, right. Do you believe it or write the side?
So then a flat dollar amount would be better, or $300 a month or $100 a month, too? Would be better. Still gonna have your disparity between positions if you go percentage or flat amounts. A percentage, I don't know. It's gonna be a catch-...
If you go so much, you're gonna have disparity.
Right.
I think we're just gonna...
Until you have a salary survey, and so...
That's right.
What the court needs to decide is whether it's per-hour increase, a percentage increase, or something. But please have mercy on me. Make that decision pretty quick. I think a percentage is gonna be the only fair thing. That's me.
Because if you make more, you're gonna get a percentage.
But most of the time, that is because of tenure that's required more anyway.
Hopefully. I think a percentage is probably the easiest.
And I know this sounds, this is just a thought until we can, you know, get things, I mean, we're down to the wire. If we could give every clerical position a dollar an hour raise instead of a 3%, a dollar an hour, that's still a 10% raise for a lot of the clerical staff out there. That's $160 a month, which is still a pretty substantial raise. Everybody be in agreement with that?
I think that we chose...
That's still $160 a month. It's a pretty good jump.
Are you talking full and part-time, or just, I'm just trying to make sure I...
I think every clerical staff out there, where they know, well, I mean, you know, because full-time gets benefits, part-time doesn't. So why not give part-time a raise?
Yeah, part-time does.
What kind of benefits do they get, Luana, if you're...
They're participating in retirement. They get sick leave.
Do they get insurance?
They, not insurance.
See, we get $5,000 more insurance benefit than part-time that you get, so...
But they accumulate comp.
Well, and I think they should get the dollar an hour, too, whether they're full-time or they're part-time. That, because if you have a lot of people that are 30 hours a week, and that gives them the same benefit, but it's...
I would think you oughta go two and one if you're gonna do something for part-time.
Well, but to give somebody a $320 a month raise at one time after $200 a month raise last year, that's $520 a month. It's just absurd. I'm sorry. That's too much.
Why don't you do a dollar and then 75 cents, or so, I don't, I don't know. If you don't wanna do a dollar, press the button.
The court didn't have a problem giving those hefty raises last year to more people.
I, I walked out, but I, I mean, I didn't hear whichever part I came, but I still think that one to five years, 20%.
It won't work. It's not gonna be, you're, you're not gonna be able to get a...
Fairness won't work.
Just do a dollar an hour. Then, just do a dollar an hour. More than 3%, so...
Make a dollar in our space, boy. Go ahead with the salary survey, and every department has to set up their steps and all that stuff. That survey's gonna set that up, or how it's gonna be done, I don't know.
And maybe once the salary survey comes in in January, and we look at it and go, "Whoa, we're way off", come back and reconsider salaries again, and then your budget.
That's not an unforeseen, you can't...
Never mind.
We just have to work on it next year.
And wait till next October?
Next week, October. And then you'll backtrack.
Always. We're good at this.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Okay, guys. What? Full-time, dollar an hour, part-time, 50 cents, full-time and part-time. Only clerical positions?
Dollar, dollar. Dollar and 50.
Dollar, full-time, 50 cents. 50% 50 cents. Full-time clerical, dollar per hour. Part-time clerical, half, 50 cents an hour.
I give her my 3%.
Officials, leave it at 3%?
Yes.
Okay, what about the positions such as new positions created full-time? $10 an hour as it is now, and $9 an hour part-time?
Yes.
Yes.
What about, like, the special projects and the 911 where we just split them? Leave them as they're set now, or does something else come into play there? The dollar an hour?
You gotta give her, she gets a raise.
Well, but she's at the 3%, or actually, it's above the 3% what they're set at as proposed right now from a starting pay rate. Someone remind me how I love this job.
Leave them as they're set. Like they are?
Yeah, what's...
All right, where we at now, Luana?
Reminding me how much I love this job.
You love your job. Trust me, you do. You told me.
I did.
I worked with mine two years.
Okay. The discussion on the special projects, as it's set right now, special projects would be at 10.75 an hour. 911 technician would be at 11.20 an hour. That 11.20 an hour would be a dollar 20 more than, well, it'd be a 20 cents more an hour, That 1120 an hour would be a dollar 20 more than, well, it'd be a 20 cents more an hour, but the special projects would not be at the minimum $11 an hour, based on the proposal of a dollar an hour raise.
So both of these would have a dollar an hour more?
Well, special projects would be at 1075 an hour, as proposed right now. If you're giving a dollar across the board, a new position would be at $11 an hour. So you're gonna need to give the, a dollar to what those positions offer.
Dollar, dollar.
Oh, your hair is turning red.
It's turning loose, too.
Okay, so 3% for all positions elected, full-time, dollar an hour, part-time, 50 cents an hour.
Yes. All in favor of staying on it?
Yes, no, yes?
Luana, does that include?
Because we're gonna come through today.
Does that include, is that, that's clerical and officials and 911 and special projects? Does that include sheriffs and, and Rhode and Bridge, or is that something different?
That's fixing to be the next question. What happens with the Sheriff's Department and Rhode and Bridge?
What do you mean, what happens?
Do they stay at the 3% as opposed now?
Yes.
As proposed now, with the exception of the six positions in Rhode and Bridge?
We asked him which was, they thought that needed, what, you know, and they gave, y'all gave them six positions the last time, right? And we okay that?
We have to have it with that, because we don't leave. How much did we give Sheriff to fuck them back?
Did you get three yeses from there? Did you get three yeses?
No. Okay, I've heard two yeses, is there a third?
Go ahead.
I don't mean, I don't mean to interrupt or anything, but what, what Carl said, that we, with Rhode and Bridge, we agreed there were six positions, and I with the clerical and everything. Carl said, this keeps ringing in my head, and he makes a lot of sense, that, and I know, I know everybody worked real hard, but what he told me was that if this does go up and we have money now, and then it goes down four or five years, you know, I mean, the boys didn't get anything.
We can give them money, they can take it away.
Right, right, and if people, if people decide to leave, I mean, people decide to leave, we can't help if they leave, or we can't, you know, I mean, we hope everyone stays, and we hope everybody, you know, I know accepts our decisions, and I know they do, but you may, I know what you're trying to say, give them a little bit of what's coming in, and also basically what Luana was basically saying, we have, you know, I know what you mean. So I, I would say, man, rather, rather than the 3% to help everybody out, 5%.
We're not a profit.
Revenue sharing.
Because the Rhode and Bridge, the other guys, some of the guys got two, I mean, $2 a dollars, or whatever it was, I don't know, but I know it was six position, but the other guys are only gonna, not guys, the personnel, that everybody judge me because I say guys, I just, it's a habit. The other personnel that drives the equipment or whatever, you know, didn't get as much or something, I would say flip it to 5%.
Across the board, irregardless?
Irregardless, 5%.
Well, that's a deposit for me.
But that's just what, that's my, I don't know, and then the dollar, the 50 cents, the six people with the positions over there, everything else that we talked about and everything, you know, sorry?
Those six, those six positions, they give that a 5% to, or not?
No. They're getting two bucks.
That's, I don't think they.
They're getting a lot more than 5%, of what, what the 5% would've been.
Well, they understand that. So everything we talked about stands, that, that part-time, 50 cents?
The six positions, whatever, what we made of the, whatever Jeff and, or Jeff said last, last meeting to make them, we made them.
And everybody else, 5%?
Yeah, and then everybody else, 5%.
Forget the dollar per hour, the 50 cents per hour.
Keep that for clerical.
The 5% would be actually less than the dollar and 50 cents. So leave the dollar.
Okay, so forget the 3%. Everybody else is gonna get 5% except for clerical, who's gonna get a dollar an hour for 50 cents part-timers.
Okay.
But everything else, except for those six positions in Rhode and Bridge.
Because that would be higher than the 5%, just like clerical would be higher.
Yes, everything else, yes, Luana, you've got it.
Leave them at what Jeff asked, or what they talked about the other day, those six positions. I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, we're trying, it's, we're starting to understand a little bit better.
She got it all over now, that's a little bit.
It's up to you, we can stay at the three, I just figured.
Reese say yes.
Oh, she's the one that needs to, right? She's got it.
Declaration again, 5% across the board for all officials.
And appointed.
Dollar an hour for clerical for full-time, 50 cents an hour for clerical part-time, the $2 an hour increase for the six specific positions in Rhode and Bridge, and the other positions get the 5%. Rhode and Bridge, Sheriff's Department, etc.
Guys, it's a, I just, I'll five, because I, what Carl said, just make a lot of sense, I mean, I understand.
Well, that puts us in a combination of two years post-status, so we're in the street expectation we are, so we're running at connect, and we'll have to consider that and figure this out, do the best we can.
And if we have to cut back?
Because you know, there's, regardless of what people think out there, there is no want from this court to be mean to any of you.
No, of course not.
There is no want resting in the street, a single one of you.
Just, just humans.
I mean, if we come and ask y'all for the same stuff y'all are asking for, you know, we flipped those roles, you've been in that position, and you've told people no, and you know how hard it is, and it kills your heart, but we still have, you know, 10,000 people out there that we have to answer to when we walk out on the street.
30 now.
30 now. My luck. It always gets better.
I'm gonna need a raise if I have to talk to that many people.
All right. So where we at now, Luana?
She loves her job.
5% across the board, all officials, the Sheriff's Department, Rhode and Bridge, dollar per hour, full-time clerical, 50 cents per hour, part-time clerical, $2 an hour for the specified Rhode and Bridge positions mentioned on Monday.
Yes.
Do you say you're doing this?
No, it's not. For everybody. 20% of this court, it's my fault now.
I'm just gonna throw a kink into everything.
Oh, man, go.
There's one of you everywhere, Luana, there's one of you everywhere in every department.
Just kinda wanted to revisit a little bit on my past attorney fees, I know they've been brought up before, before I only made court copies. I would like to bring it up again. On the top of bill, you will see the current balance that is due on that account. I listened back here to the budget, John talked about, you put $50,000 in a budget for legal fees to protect yourselves from anything that you could possibly do that would be considered illegal. I think that should be extended to the rest of us elected officials. There has been a lawsuit filed and awarded, it's a judgment default on me, basically it ruins my personal credit. If I could try to get a loan for a new vehicle, improve my house, whatever, I would probably decline that because of default judgment. I'm here again to ask for them to pay the other half of the attorney fees, which is a little over $14,000.
It's a $17,000.
I'm sorry, 17, sorry, sometimes I'm a little dyslexic, that's Luana, she'll say that. Just thinking all fairness back, I have copies here, back in 2009, when the county attorney's office filed suit against James and Carl, Judge Kendall, Judge, Commissioner Blasky, and Commissioner Rosette to remove them from my office. You two did approve, pay your own legal fees, I think that should be fair to me also. Y'all didn't do anything wrong, I didn't do anything wrong, obviously, because I'm still standing here, and I just would like to have it be considered in this budget. Some of y'all may or may not be guilty, like I felt a couple of years ago, from the county attorney's office, but I think you need to put yourself in my shoes for five minutes and realize that making just the salary that I make, it's a very big financial burden trying to do my job.
You have a judgment filed against you.
Yes, and you have copies of that, yeah, I'm sorry, Barbara, I didn't have any more copies of that, so I'd like it to be considered as part of the budget for this coming here to pay the rest of that fee.
Can I, can I just say something?
Sure.
I know the local government codes is that you're supposed to come and ask for counsel, and you didn't do that, and you blanked me, reasons why later, fear and stuff, and I wish you to follow procedure, but I don't think we have the right to ruin your life, to ruin your credit, and to ruin any future that you might have, if you don't ever get reelected, they do do a credit check.
Well, and I, maybe, I need to clarify, I thought I had three options, either you pay nothing, you, I come to you and ask for it, or after the fact, after the fact, come to ask to pay for it. I thought that was the understanding that I had, and now maybe I need to go back and reread the government code, but I thought that was the, the options that were given to me, to, Commissioner's Court could approve to pay nothing, something, or appoint someone to do it for me.
How much stuff is filed against you, Luana?
I think it's like charges, 25 to 30, I think, and there's only three at the end that the judge would actually let be brought against me. Took the jury about 10 minutes, the time, well, the time they dismissed, the time they came back was like 20 minutes, and we figured everybody needed to use a potty break, and get a jury foreman, and blah, 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 it took about 10 minutes to come back on not guilty in all three.
But it was like a three-day trial.
It was a three-day trial, that probably could've been done in, in my opinion, a half, but when you start adding documents that probably shouldn't have even been brought in.
I'll tell you, my only concern with this, Luana, and this is just speaking for me with the rest of the court, I don't think your whole life should be ruined over it. I'm in agreement with you.
I, I'm in agreement with you.
I don't think, I don't think we owe you, if you lose this job, you shouldn't be punished for ever having this job. If you get beat and you don't get reelected, your credit's crap.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And then going back again to the same thing that Carl and James was, and I keep mentioning you two, because you two weren't not there when it happened, you know, Commissioner's Court can approve their own legal fees, and I don't think that's right.
I don't.
You know, why should we have to?
I got probably accorded too, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I don't think you have the right to ruin your life. I say pay them.
My, my, I have not a problem at all paying them, and that's the way, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that. The only thing is, on my part, my decision would be, I would go ahead and agree with that, but because you know the way everything is right now, and there's, you know, there's people, so everything's going, just not 100% correct right now. I personally, as Commissioner's, be me, as one of the commissioners sits on the court, because there's still that, that it wasn't asked before, and I don't know what that is, and I know that we, we paid our own, and I understand that, and I don't wanna ruin your, your chance of ever having anything like that, or you know, it getting in the way, of course, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do that to nobody. But also have to protect another person's seat coming at me by making the wrong decision without a attorney.
But you've already agreed to pay half of it before.
Right.
Now I'm asking for the other half, so apparently that was okay, because I'm, I'm assuming we went to either George Hyde or Ross Fisher for opinion on paying.
Ross Fisher, which one?
Say, they brought, then, then you said that it was, I'm just, I don't, I don't have a problem.
I see your side.
To get another, to get another suit, snap the Commissioner's Court.
Right.
Right. Let me just clarify this.
Ross said it was discretionary on our behalf, because she should've came before us, and we should've approved it prior to.
Okay.
Okay? And he said, so it was discretionary, we could pay none, or we could pay all, so we paid half, but then the judgment stuff comes back, and a lawsuit, and that's my only part is, I'm not gonna ruin anybody's life.
Since we only paid half, and that was our decision, can we go back legally and pay the, pay the other half?
Yes.
Legally. Well, here's the thing, you either owe, this is my first.
I'm trying to save this from another shit.
I'm not an attorney. You either owe the whole thing, or you owe none. I don't think anybody sitting here says.
At the time, at the time I made the decision, my view was that, okay, she didn't come before and ask for it, but she was not found guilty, so if she had come before and asked, we may have had a different counsel for her, maybe not the counsel she wanted, but may have been set up different, tack may have provided something. So I had to discuss it with Margaret, and I didn't know about her decision to offer. When she made the decision, when she made the motion to pay half, I said, if we can get this done, pay half, and get behind it, and you pay half, it's over. And so I seconded immediately, and I wanted to pay half, but that's where I made my decision.
Well, and I appreciate that.
At that time, you know, just, let's just get it done, over with.
I think, I think the reason for the paying half of it and everything was because if it would've been brought to Commissioner's Court or to the proper, proper authorities, or, you know what I mean?
Right.
There would've been a cap put on there, and it wouldn't exceeded up to X amount of dollars or whatever, it would've been a cap at 15, I don't know exactly, because it didn't